Good evening and welcome to the December 14, 2023, meeting of the Zoning Board of Examiners and Appeals. Will Secretary please call the roll?
Ellen McKay.
Here.
Dave Hale.
Here.
Dale Smythe.
Here.
Andrew Ramadahl.
Here.
Brian Flynn.
Here.
Travis Santo.
Here.
Jackie Sabina is not in attendance. Thank you. You are recorum.
Next order of business is approval of minutes. We have minutes for Monday, August 7, 2023. Can I have a positive motion, please? Moved by Mr. Hale, seconded by Dale Smythe. Are there any corrections to the minutes? Is there any objection to approval of the minutes? Seeing and hearing none, the motion passes and is approved by unanimous consent. Next order of business, special order of business disclosures. Are there any disclosures for this evening? Seeing and hearing none, we'll move on. At this point, I would like to entertain a motion to reorder the agenda and move the election of a parliamentarian until after the public hearings and move the fourth case in public hearings, case 2023-0065, to the beginning of the public hearings. If I could have a motion, please. Mr. Smythe moves. And Mr. Flynn seconds the motion. Is there any discussion? Is there any objection to reordering the agenda? Seeing and hearing none, the agenda is reordered. Next item of business, the consent agenda. There's nothing on the consent agenda. There's no appearance requests, no unfinished business, and nothing on the regular agenda, which brings us to public hearings. Cases this evening are variance cases, and the procedure by which the public may speak to the board at this meeting is, after the staff presentation is completed on public hearing items, the chair will ask for the applicant to state their case. The applicant, including all of his or her representatives, has 10 minutes for the presentation and may reserve time for rebuttal at the end of the public hearing. Throughout the proceedings, the burden of proof rests upon the applicant who must convince the board by a preponderance of evidence that the variance should be granted. A concurring vote of a majority of the fully constituted membership of the board minus those excused by conflicts of interest shall be required to grant a variance. For a variance to be granted, all eight standards must be substantially met. The conclusion of the applicant's presentation, the board members and the staff made direct questions to the applicant through the chair. The chair will then open the hearing to public testimony on the issue. Persons wishing to testify will follow the time limits established in the rules of procedure. Representatives of groups, such as community councils and PTAs, have five minutes and individuals have three minutes. When your testimony is complete, you may be asked questions by the board. You may only testify once on any issue unless questioned by the board. Time is kept by the secretary. Display at the front will be green to within one minute of the time allowed, then it will turn yellow. At this time, you should begin to sum up your testimony, and at the end of the allowed time, the light will turn red and its tone will sound. Any individual may have appeal rights related to any action the zoning board of appeal, zoning board of examiners and appeals takes. The parties have 30 days from the date of mailing or other distribution of the decision to file an appeal to Superior Court. And with that, we will take up case 2023-0065. The petitioner, Douglas Ebbie, has requested to postpone to a date uncertain. Could I have a positive motion, please? Mr. Hale.
I move to postpone case number 2023-0065 to a future date.
Seconded by Mr. Smythe. Is there any discussion? Is there any objection to this postponement? Seeing and hearing none, case 2023-0065 is postponed. Moving on to case H2, H1, excuse me. I got it. I got it. Case 2023-0114. The petitioner is Amos Ginggerich. Is he in attendance? He indicates that he is. Will the staff please describe the notice given in this case?
Thank you, Madam Chair. On October 17, 2023, a total of 201 public hearing notices were mailed in accordance with procedures of AMC 2103-020H. There were no public comments received, and a letter of support was received from the Scenic foothills Community Council President.
Are there any objections to the sufficiency of notice in this case? Seeing and hearing none, will the staff please present the case?
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair. So this is going to be a request for a variance from Table 2106. That's the Table of Dimensional Standards for Residential Districts, and this is to allow entryway stairs to encroach 12.5 feet into a required 20-foot front yard setback. This encroachment was discovered during a zoning completeness evaluation for closing a building permit from 2006. The owner applied to construct a front addition on the north side of the home, and after some years of hardships is seeking to close out the permit for completed work. The entryway shown on the provided as-built appears to have been constructed per the approved building permit. The plot plan provided with the permit does not show the addition of an entryway set of stairs on the front of the home. The staircase was constructed in 2007 to provide entry to the home. There were no objections to the granting of this variance from the agencies. And in the matters of the findings, staff finds condition A appears, does not appear to be met. The subject parcel is not affected by extraordinary physical circumstances such as streams, wetlands, or unique geometry. In the matter of condition B, standard does not appear to be met. The strict application of the code does not create an exceptional hardship or deprive the applicant of rights commonly enjoyed by other property owners in the R1 district. Arctic entryways and associated stairways are common amenities within a northern climate. Standard C, staff finds that that standard does not appear to be fully met. While the hardship is self-imposed, the petitioner's need for the variance arises from the entryway addition being built to the setback. The stairs were constructed different from the design in larger part due to cost. The entryway is 20.6 feet from the property line, and stairs would have to be built from the side, in front of the garage, or on the opposite side into the yard. The plot plan provided with permit did not show the addition of the stairway on the front of the home, and no other encroachments are present on the property. Staff finds condition D is met. Given the character, history, and current zoning of the neighborhood, it does not appear at this time the granting of a variance will adversely affect the use of adjacent properties. Standard E, staff finds that standard is met. The requested variance will not change the character of the R1 zoning district in which the petition site is located. Granting this variance to encroach within the front yard setback will not permit either a principal or accessory use other than was already permitted under municipal code. Standard F, staff finds that is met. It does not appear that this encroachment result in any negative impacts to health or safety of the people of the municipality. Having means of egress in the event of an emergency is an essential life safety feature. Standard G, standards met. Standard is not applicable. And standard H, the standard is met. A front door stairway to an arctic entry is a common amenity enjoyed within northern home designs. The variance granted is the minimum variance that will make reasonable use of the land. The stairway has passed structural inspection and existed there for over 16 years. The applicant is not proposing to increase the size of the existing stairway and provided cost estimates to build a retaining wall and concrete stairway estimated between $30,000 to $35,000. However, he would like to retain the use and use the existing stairs. So in order for staff to recommend approval, all standards have to be met. Staff has found that the A, B, and C are not met. Therefore, the department recommends denial. However, after the public hearing, if the board finds that all eight standards are met, then the approval should be subject to conditions 1 and 2 found on page staff 5 of the staff packet. I'm happy to answer any questions, and the petitioners here as well. So if we look on page 9, that kind of has a picture of it, as well as the applicant has submitted pictures on page 16 as well. I believe the original plan was going to have a kind of a concrete stairway and blocks built into the side of the hill there in the shape of an L. Thank you.
Are there any questions of staff by the board? I have a question, maybe a clarification. So the original design that was approved was dependent on raising the grade so that the, because the face of the arctic entry is at the setback, how is that going to get handled?
Madam Chair, let's see here. Let me take a look. I believe that, yes, the original, well, we have page 24 is the land, is the land use approved, kind of the permit, and it shows, yes, it shows sort of a fill area there, if you can see, and the addition, and I believe that was going to be stairs. I think the petitioner can speak more to it, but it wasn't going to be a stairwell like we see existing. It was going to be kind of a concrete and perhaps block with, like you said, fill that kind of leads to that front entryway that they built.
Thank you. Are there any questions of staff by the applicant? Will the applicant please come forward and state your name and spell your name for the remarks? You need to turn your mic on. Little green.
Yes.
There you go. Okay.
Hi, I'm Amos Ginggerich, A-M-O-S-G-I-N-G-E-R-I-C-H.
Please present your case.
So, hi, I'm Amos Ginggerich, and I want to thank you for hearing my zoning variance request this evening. I need to apologize in advance that I'm reading from a prepared statement to avoid stumbling and to facilitate.
Could you speak a little bit more into the mic? We can't hear you.
To facilitate a clear presentation. I'm applying for a zoning variance to allow an arctic entry, landing, and stairs to extend into the 20-foot setback for R1 properties. The need for an arctic entry arose from having a large family of six children in a postage-stamped-sized entryway. Jam-ups and bickering were, had become a common occurrence as we came and went from the house. The planning department evaluates eight criteria, A through H, that must be substantially met for a zoning variance. I'm going to address only the criteria the planning department assessed as not substantially met. Criteria A, there exists exceptional or extraordinary physical circumstances. These criteria are a little bit paraphrased to shorten the presentation. The lot, my response is the lot characteristics could be easily accommodated if this were an entirely new build on an empty lot. Unfortunately, this is not the case. The arctic entry was built in, the arctic entry built in relation to the setback and lot elevation changes the circumstance raising the need for the variance. I thought I'd checked all the boxes during the approval process, and the plans were approved. Criteria B, because of these physical circumstances, the strict application of the code creates undue hardship and deprives the applicant of rights commonly enjoyed by other properties. So I approached this a little bit from the standpoint of looking at options, and my response is, due to the arctic entry build in relation to lot elevation and the setback, a number of hardships are raised. Evaluating alternative options, one, remove the stairs entirely. Front home access is essential for reasonable use of the property, and a lack thereof introduces safety concerns and severely limits utility of the property. So other options are move the door to either side. To the west blocks, moving the stairs to the west blocks the garage access and the driveway, and it's not a reasonable alternative. Moving to the east, the grade is roughly 50 inches elevated, and the steps in this area block a window plus stairs would still be required in the setback to get down to the driveway level, which was 50 inches lower. Either side, moving to either side means major reconstruction and significant costs and still doesn't provide a reasonable solution. The other option is to build to plan. Building to plan involves retaining walls, the large concrete stairs, and planter boxes plus fill, and leaves all these, but still leaves all these structures in the setback. An estimate for a cheaper wood structure had a cost of $30,000 to $35,000 that was projected based on inflation from a 2015 estimate, and a concrete stairs would likely be significantly more. So the possible options all come with significant hardships in terms of safety, loss of utility, or major financial costs. Criteria C, the hardship is not self-imposed. In this case, it could be said that the hardship is self-imposed. However, the mitigating circumstance is the fact that I was working with approved plans, which include its stairs in the setback, so I'm arguing that the hardship is not self-imposed. Standards D through H were considered met by the planning department assessment, and I agree with those assessments. So in summary, I depended on approved plans, allowing the arctic entry build, which included stairs in the setback. An arctic entry is a common amenity in our climate, and was also needed to accommodate my large family's coming and goings. I contend it makes no sense to entirely eliminate the front entry door and stairs because of safety and utility concerns. There are no other reasonable alternatives as discussed previously. Building to plan still requires noncomplying structures in the setback and would be prohibitively expensive. Alternatively, the present in-place stairs are well-constructed and have passed the test of time, having been in existence for 16 years. Keeping these stairs is the simplest and most cost-effective solution. I'm retired now, and I'm living on a fixed income, so extra costs do matter. Therefore, I respectfully request that my application for a zoning variance be approved.
You have 3 minutes and 53 seconds for rebuttal. Are there any questions of the applicant by the board members? No questions? Mr. Hale.
Thank you, through the chair. I was trying to figure out this, it says that there was a building permit that was approved, and it didn't show stairs. How are we going to access? It looks like the entryway is right on.
Well, I believe it did show stairs. Certainly, the plans that were submitted showed stairs.
So I guess my question would be to staff, if they know anything about that?
Mr. Hale, no, we just, we just have that on page 24, as you see, the approved plans, and it's, it's not very detailed.
Yeah, they gave me the, when I was, when I was trying to close the permit, they gave me the plans that were held by the planning department, said that I could have them. So maybe that's why you don't have those now.
So when you got those approved, it showed the stairway going out in its current location?
Yes. It was, configuration was slightly different, but it was there.
And no one mentioned that it was in the setback at that time?
Yeah, it was in the setback. The entryway was built to the setback. There was no other place to put stairs.
So at that point, what did they say about the stairs being in the setback?
It was, the attempt was to correct it by filling in and building retaining walls. So change the grade, essentially. But my driveway still is, it creates some problems because the driveway is still 50 inches below the, or the stairs are 60 inches high to the landing. So it's, there's not much space between my driveway and the entry from east to, from west to east. So it's a very expensive proposition to try to fill the grade and build those concrete stairs. I've since gone through a divorce, and so that was the reason that I didn't proceed with the plan as built, as specified.
Can you clarify your statement? You said that, when you were asked about the stairway, stairway being at the setback, you said the solution was to, to do the fill? How is that correcting the stairs being in the setback?
Well, I think the logic was that you can have something 30 inches high in the setback. So if the fill was to 30 inches, then that would leave additional 30 inches. So if the grade at the beginning of the stairs is considered 30 inches, then the stairway would be 30 inches high to reach the five-foot level. So it's like two tiers. Driveway is down at, there's the driveway level, and there's the entryway level. And so the idea was to build retaining walls, raise the grade to 30 inches above driveway level, and then have the stairs proceed up from there. But you still have to have stairs to get, to get up to the grade. So it's really just kind of a workaround sort of thing. You still have 60 inches of stairs in the setback, no matter which way you go.
Mr. Hale.
Through the chair. So it sounds like you, your design in the first place was just doomed to failure because they, they designed an addition that was inaccessible. Yeah, how are you, I mean, you're always going to have stairs in the setback, according to this design.
Yes, that is correct.
So you were relying on your professional, I guess, to steer you in the right direction?
Well, I relied on approved plans.
Who were you, who designed it for you? Was it an architect or something?
It was an architect, Carol Stockard.
I'm just trying, as a member of the board, we're supposed to uphold the code. What you have here is you have an addition that was designed that is not functional. You know, your house goes straight up to the setback, and there's no way to access that elevated entrance legally to the, you know, and meet the code, even from the beginning. So it's just, it's a little odd.
Yeah. Well, I think the mitigating circumstance in this case is that, you know, I proceeded with approved plans. I didn't just go build it and then hope that the plans were approved.
Yeah, that's right. I mean, a lot of homeowners, they just have to rely on professionals, and if someone approves the plans, you know, they don't, they don't know any better.
Yeah.
I'm just trying to understand it. Thank you.
Any other questions of the applicant by staff, by the board? If not, are there any questions of the applicant by staff?
No questions.
Okay. So we'll, thank you, Mr. Ginggerich.
Thank you.
Is there anyone from the public wishing to testify in this case? Anyone in the public?
Shall I turn this mic off?
No. Anyone from the public wishing to testify in this case? Seeing and hearing none. You, Mr. Ginggerich, you have 3 minutes and 53 seconds. Additionally, do you have anything else that you would? He indicates not. Okay, so, does the staff have anything additional?
Madam Chair, nothing additional.
Okay. Then we close the public hearing, and the matter rests with the board. May I have a positive motion, please? Mr. Hale.
I move in case 2023-0114 to approve a variance from AMC 21.06.020A, Table 21.06-1, Table of Dimensional Standards, Residential Districts, to allow entryway stairs to encroach 12.5 feet into a required 20-foot front setback, subject to the conditions shown on page 5 of the staff report.
I don't mean to interrupt, but I can't hear a word anybody saying. The microphones just don't work for me, and all I wanted to do is make a comment about any kind of setback that is done into the tidal areas because it's more than just a minor issue.
But that's not this case yet.
I'm sorry, ma'am. I probably should have brought somebody with me.
The round room is, the acoustics in this round room are difficult, and when you're in this, when you're in the center, it's even worse. So if you, maybe if you could move to the side and see if that helps at all?
She says you may be able to hear better if you're off to the side. What's that? She said you may be able to hear better if you're off to the side. The acoustics in the middle of that.
Yeah, I hear a little, well, I hear better out of my left ear, that's why.
Yeah, on the side of the room, you may be able to hear better.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
We'll try that anyway. We'll try that anyway. Don't we have hearing devices? Did that help?
That's better.
Okay, thank you. All right, it has been moved and seconded that a variance be granted to allow entry stairs to encroach 12.5 feet into required 20-foot front setback, subject to five, subject to conditions on page 5 of the staff report. So, will Mr. Hale please speak to your motion?
Thank you to the Chair. I intend to support the motion based on the following findings, and I'll address findings A, B, and C, since they were the ones that were apparently not met. I'll say for condition A, the extraordinary physical circumstance with this house, if, really, that the new construction should have been vetted a little bit better. And I think the fact that it was approved and shows pretty clearly that the, the new addition was not going to be able to be accessed anyway without a variance. I think that it shouldn't have been approved in the first place, and I don't know that you can fault the homeowner for that because he's following the professionals' advice. So, I would say that the extraordinary physical circumstances is the fact that the, the house is there, the building addition is complete, and there's nowhere to put anything to access that building. So, there's no room. That, to me, is, is an extraordinary circumstance, and I think that standard is met based on the fact that the plans were approved, and probably shouldn't have been, but they were. So, I'm going to say that that standard was met. Standard B, exceptional or undue hardship, I believe that having to remove those stairs, and again, no matter what you do, you can't fix it. You can't keep stuff out of that setback because of the way they built that entry. It is gonna, it's gonna create a huge amount of undue hardship, I believe. So, I believe that that standard is met as well. And I think the fact that the plans were approved by professionals who are supposed to be guiding homeowners means that it wasn't self-imposed. The homeowner was trying to do, you know, meet the code, meet the standards, he was not able to. So, I think in that regard, this was not self-imposed because those plans were approved. And that's why I'm going to support my motion.
Mr. Smythe.
Yes, thank you. I also intend to support my motion through the Chair. So, I want to agree with Dave on his points A, B, and C. I won't contest points D through H. But specifically, this point B, you know, undue hardship somewhat subjective, and in this case, I think, talked about what that would do with the fixed income. I also want to say this is not the first time we've had a homeowner come before the Board with approved plans that didn't meet code from the beginning. We have approved variances like this in the past, and I think intend to do so again. So, I want to thank the applicant for even going through the proper channels and process to get your original one built, and the fact that you're applying for this variance now. That's all I've got. Thank you.
Is there any further discussion? Are you ready for the question? Apparently. The question is on the adoption of a motion to grant a variance to allow entry stairs to encroach 12.5 feet into the required front yard setback, subject to conditions shown on page 5 of the staff report. A yes vote will grant the variance, and a no vote will deny the variance. Please vote. Mr. Ramadon, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you. There are six votes in the affirmative, no votes in the negative, and the variance is granted. So, moving on to the second case. Case 2023-0105. William Mott is the petitioner. Is the petitioner present? Thank you. Indicates he is. Will the staff please describe the notice given in this case?
Thank you, Madam Chair. On November 16th, 2023, a total of 113 public hearing notices were mailed in accordance with the procedures of AMC 21.03.020H. As of this writing, no public comments have been received. The petitioner did supply with their application a petition signed by surrounding neighbors in support of granting of the variance for the increased height of the rear shed. This is on page 25 of the staff packet. And the Sand Lake Community Council did not provide comments on this case.
Are there any objections to the sufficiency of notice in this case? Seeing none, we will continue. Will the staff please present the case?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is a request for dimensional variances from AMC 2106.020A, Table 2106-1, Table of Dimensional Standards, Residential Districts. These, there are two different variances for two different structures. The first one is to allow the rear shed to exceed maximum allowable height by three feet to a height of 15 feet. And number two is to allow the front shed to encroach three feet into the front setback. I'll go through variance one, and then return to variance two. Variance one is a 384-square-foot rear shed that was constructed in 2017 on what was then Lot 12, without acquiring a permit for construction. The structure is approximately 14 feet 6 inches at the midpoint, therefore requiring approximately a three-foot variance in height. The allowed maximum height for a shed in the R5 district is 12 feet. Just note, the height of the rear shed was noticed when an inspector visited the site, believing it to be an accessory dwelling unit, given its appearance, height, and overall size. It is, however, a, just a tall 24-by-16 shed on pier blocks with an elevated deck ramp to access the two garage doors. This shed is used for additional storage and occasionally for motorized vehicles. During the variance submittal process for the height variance, planning staff discovered the front setback encroachment. The property owner is planning on renovations to the principal structure home, so to acquire a building permit, he must either acquire the variance for those structures or move or alter or remove both the sheds to meet code requirements. Reviewing agencies had no, no comments or no objections to both encroachments, either to the front setback of the front shed and the rear height of the rear shed. Of course, the applicant must meet, particularly with relief sought, must specify the facts and circumstances that are alleged to show the application substantially meets the following eight standards. Standard A is met for variance one. Standard B is not met. The size of this parcel and the surrounding parcels impacts and limits locations for placement of accessory structures. However, this variance to height is not related to physical circumstances on property and does not create an exceptional or undue hardship. The standard for C is not met for variance one. The rear shed was built by the property owner without a permit. Had a building permit been acquired at the time of construction, the shed could have sought a variance for height, or the structure could have been modified to a detached garage. Detached garage carports can be up to 25 feet in height, doubly allowed height for a shed in the R5 district. Also, detached garages can either be built either on piers, like a shed, or a permanent foundation. Sorry, standard. I'm sorry, I got confused. That was standard C, I'm sorry. Standard B, no, I covered that, my bad. Standard D, E, F, G, and H, sorry, D, E, F, and G were all met for variance one, and standard H was partially met for variance one. The structure does exceed the maximum height allowed for an accessory use in the R5 district. The minimum variance would be to reduce the height of the structure to 12 feet to meet current dimensional standards. However, if you view this lot, according to the 2040 Land Use Plan Map, as a large lot residential, again, large lot residential is defined as residential zoning districts R6, R8, R9, and R10. In the R6, R8, and R9 districts, the maximum height for other accessory shed is 25 feet and 18 feet in the R10 district. The shed would not require variance if built in any of these districts. Variance number two. The 200-square-foot front shed was constructed in 2011 after removing an existing larger shed that was approximately 10 feet closer to the front property line. Sheds 200 square feet or smaller do not require a building permit. The shed is approximately 17 feet 8 inches from the property line at the southwest corner, and approximately 20 feet at the southeast corner. This therefore requires approximately a three-foot variance for the largest portion of the shed encroaching to the front setback. Standard A is met for variance two. Standard B is met for variance two. Standard C is partially met for variance two. The replacement of the existing shed in the front setback did not require a building permit due to it being 200 square feet in size. The property owner measured from the edge of quiet circle right away, assuming the distance was far enough to place the shed outside of the front setback. In addition, the shed was smaller and setback further than the existing shed that was replaced, and there had not been any known issues with the location of that existing shed. Standard D, E, F, G, and H are all met for variance number two. Therefore, for variance one, AMC requires that all eight standards be substantially met in order for variance to be granted. The Department finds that standards B, C, and H are either not met or partially met, and standards A, D, E, F, and G are met. Therefore, the Department must recommend denial of the variance if, after a public hearing, the Board finds that all eight standards are substantially met, then the approval should be subject to the following conditions, 1 and 2, on page 6 of your staff report. In the matter of variance two, AMC requires that all eight standards be substantially met in order for a variance to be granted. The Department finds that standards C and H are either not met or partially met, and standards A, B, D, E, F, and G are met. Therefore, the Department must recommend denial of the variance if, after a public hearing, the Board finds that all eight standards are substantially met, then the approval should be subject to the following conditions, 3 and 4, found on page 6 and 7 of your staff packet. Again, Mr. William Mott is in attendance to answer any questions you might have, and I am, could answer any questions you might have.
Are there any questions of staff by the Board? Mr. Hale.
Thank you to the Board. I'm curious what the difference would be between a detached garage and a shed.
So, thank, thank you, through the Chair, Mr. Hale. That was actually a really good question, I believe, unfortunately, and maybe the property owner can answer a few more questions. But there's been some confusion when it came to Development Services and talking about Title 23. I talked to both a few inspectors about this exact thing is, okay, what would? So, a garage, as long as it can house a motor vehicle and an ATV, a snow machine, a motorcycle, is considered a motor vehicle. And the property owner has, at times, stored his ATVs within the shed. He got, unfortunately, conflicting information from Building Safety. One inspect, sorry, one plan reviewer said, yes, it could be a detached garage. It would need to have a sloped floor, so that if you brought a vehicle in that was wet, that it would not pool and puddle, or I guess, and it would, just like any garage has to either have a floor drain or be sloped to the garage doors. The other, it's, the other plan reviewer said it couldn't be because it was on piers, and I got, I asked for clarification on that. That was not, that is not a requirement for a detached garage. And so, there's been some mixed, confusing information coming from Development Services.
I looked at the code, and it said that a detached garage could be on piers.
Correct, and it can be. And so, there was the question on whether or not the property owner was willing to modify it, or if they were even going to allow him to modify it. And so, he got some conflicting information, and I also got that same conflicting information. And so, instead of going down that path, he sought to just get a variance and clarify it through the variance process.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Mr. Smythe.
Thank you through the Chair. Similar to Mr. Hale's question, what's the definition of a shed? Can you remind us how they define that?
So, shed is just an, another accessory. So, if you were to look at the dimensional standards of accessory uses, a shed is just considered another accessory. So, garage, garage is specific that it, that you put some kind of vehicle, motor, motorized vehicle. And again, a motorized vehicle can be a snow machine. It could be an electric bike for all that really matters, because that's motorized. And, and we, and I know for a fact that the property owner does, stores his ATVs in there every once in a while, but he was told not to, and that, and it didn't, by one individual in Building Safety, I know, again, sorry. And so, I, I asked for clarification from another plan reviewer, and she said, no, he could, he can convert, he could call it a garage. He would just need to prove that the floor slopes to the garage doors. And, sorry, go, Mr. Smythe.
Oh, no other details such as utilities, electricity?
Nope.
Foundation?
Nope, it can be, exactly, it can still be on piers, just like Mr. Hale said. It can be on piers, it does not have to be on a permanent foundation. It can have a wood floor, it can, because we know that there are many garages in town that are built on, I mean, they have concrete slabs, but they're on top of wood-framed floors because they don't, you know, because of grade or whatever for existing. So, yes, it could still exist, it just had to have a sloped floor.
Any other questions? I have a question. On the as-built, it's labeled as a shop.
Correct.
What's the difference between a garage or shed and a shop? And can a shop be as tall as we need it to be?
I, I wish. That, that is a little confusing. It's, it's just a really large, I would still call it a garage, but it's just a really large shed that, that he uses as a shop and as storage. That.
Is, is there a height limitation on a shop?
Yes, it's, it, so shop still, sorry, Madam Chair, shop would still be in another, it would be an accessory other, and would still fall under the 12-foot height.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Hale.
I was just going to add that the surveyor called it a shop, but he's not giving a professional opinion. That's just a generic term that he's using for his as-built.
Thank you.
Okay. Are there any questions of staff by the applicant?
Do you have any questions for me, Bill?
No, 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 I don't at the moment.
Okay, then will the applicant please, will the applicant please come forward? State and spell your name for the record.
My name's Bill Mott, M-O-T-T.
And present.
Okay, I'd like to address the, the front shed first, if that's all right. I built that, it was less than 200 square feet, so I didn't need a permit. I was well aware of the setbacks and intended to meet all of those. The front setback, I couldn't find the front survey marker. It was a piece of rebar that was buried. It's since been located, I had to have the whole lot resurveyed. But what I did was I went to the toe of the road, I knew I had to be 20 feet back, so I measured 30 feet back and made sure I was at least 30 feet back, so I had a 10-foot leeway. I figured that was pretty safe, given, I assumed the road was where it was supposed to be. It turns out the road is actually about 10 or 15 feet further to the south than it's supposed to be. It actually encroaches on my neighbor's across the street's front property line. So, that puts it 15 feet further away from my front property line. So, when I set 30 feet apart, and I'm actually, the shed is actually 34 feet from the road itself, it's actually, it turned out to be 17 and a half feet from my property line. And there's trees that are, if you look at the pictures I put in my packet, there are trees that are actually, you know, 20 feet from my shed that are actually in the road. I, I just assumed the road was where it was supposed to be. Rather than spend $5,000 having it surveyed, I just trusted that the road was located where, where it was supposed to be. That's kind of clearly presented in, let me find the photo number. Apologize.
I believe it's page 18 of the staff packet.
Yeah, photo seven. So, the. You can see the shed itself is setback almost 35 feet from the road where the road actually is. I had no idea that the city would put the road, other than they wouldn't center it on the actual road right-of-way, and that threw me off. I did give myself some leeway. I measured it 30 feet back and ended up putting it four feet past that, thinking that I was safely out of the right-of-way. I've got pictures in there. It doesn't block the view. It doesn't block, you know, vehicles coming down the road. It's well setback from where the road actually is. Again, aside from bringing a surveyor in, and surveyors cost quite a bit of money, I couldn't have known that the road wasn't where it actually was platted. My lot itself is... We've got a power line in the back lot, so the back 20 or 30 feet of the lot is not... I can't put anything there, other than the trampoline you see in the picture. It's... It can't be built on. And then the south... Excuse me, east side of the lot is really, really sloped. So, I've got a limited amount of area that I can place things. To move that shed back, I would have to excavate three or four feet behind it and move the retaining wall back and pull it back, which is what I'll do if this isn't approved, but it's really just checking a box. It's nowhere near the road. It's nowhere near where the road actually is. Like they mentioned, there was a shed there. It was probably 10 feet closer to the road when I bought the house. I assumed I was doing well, because I did measure back from the road, and I did place it significantly further back than where the original shed was. Going back to the rear shed, I did get all of my neighbors that actually live in the neighborhood to sign a petition saying they don't have a problem with the shed where it is. It's what I store up there. I store emergency equipment. I have food for an earthquake. I have sleeping bags. I have a tent. I have things that my family would use in the event of a significant earthquake. It gives us a place to store emergency gear. I did use to keep four-wheelers in there, but when they told me that I couldn't, because it wasn't a garage and had a wood floor, we moved those out to our cabin. So, the only motorized vehicle in the shed is our push lawnmower. So, we don't, because of the information I got, we don't store any equipment there. I was trying to maximize our storage. I used to have a tent there, one of the 10-by-20 tents that they sell at Costco. What I put up is significantly better looking. It adds the value of the neighborhood. It's well-built. It... There's really... I was trying to do the right thing. It blends in with the neighborhood. It matches my house. They thought it was an accessory dwelling unit, because I made it look that way. It's just a shed. There's lots of things. There's telephone poles behind it that stand up significantly higher than the shed itself. There's really no drawback to the neighborhood. The neighbors like it. They call it the Taj Mahal. So, there's no hard feelings around it. Everybody is happy with it. Everybody gladly signed a waiver saying... Or petition saying that they didn't have an issue with it. So, it doesn't draw from the value of the neighborhood. My options are to remove it. I looked at moving it out to Willow, to our cabin. The cost for the mover was somewhere between $20,000 and $25,000. The unknown cost is I would have to pay every electric utility between my house and my cabin to lift the power lines to move it through. So, we're probably looking at $30,000, $35,000, and it's not worth that. If I can't get the variance, I'm going to have to probably tear it down. I don't really see a reasonable way to lower the roof without some kind of... Safely without some kind of extraordinary cost. Practically, there really isn't a reason for it. It's not blocking anybody's view. It's blocking my view, maybe, and the neighbor's view of the power line that's behind it. I don't think anything... Anybody minds that. Again, my lot is very sloped on the far side. I don't have a full... I have 6 tenths of an acre, but I have a fraction of that that you could actually place anything. It's not flat enough to put anything like that in. It looks like a garage. You can't fit a... I didn't build it to get a car in. You can't access the garage door with a vehicle. I used to put four-wheelers in there, but you couldn't get any kind of car into it. It's just... It doesn't have that access in front. It was never intended for that. Yeah, I would certainly be happy to answer questions, but I don't... Yeah, I don't have any... Much more to say, other than it actually enhances the safety of the neighborhood and my family because of the materials we store on there. We store dry food. We store emergency equipment and that type of thing.
You have 2 minutes and 16 seconds for rebuttal.
I'd be happy to leave that for questions, or...
Are there any... Well, you don't get charged for that question.
Okay.
Are there any questions of the applicant by the board members? Mr. Smythe.
Real quick, through the chair, thank you. Is this thing on a foundation? You said you'd looked at moving it.
No, it's on treated timbers.
Right, yeah. But there's no room to slide it back, is what...
Are you talking about the front one?
Yeah, the front one.
It's on just blocks. It's on paver blocks.
Yeah, yeah. And it's still... It didn't appear that you could slide that.
I'd have to lift it and put it on rollers or something and pull it back.
There's a room to do that, or...
Not without excavating. I'd have to excavate. I've got a retaining... A small retaining block wall behind it. I'd have to excavate back three or four feet, rebuild that wall, and then pull it back.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Mr. Hale.
Thank you through the chair. I'd like to talk about the rear shed/garage. You keep referring to it as a shed. Initially, I'd like to say that it's really tough with this board when you don't get a permit in the first place. People are out building stuff without permits, and especially professionals who understand permits. It's really hard to overlook that. And so, I'm looking at your shed/garage, which you've used as a garage, and it sounds like somebody would view as a garage would clear that problem right up. Do you feel like maybe you could try to work with staff to get that designation as a garage and not need a variance for that?
Yeah, I'll go back to the permit. That was my... My father-in-law was leaving town. I needed his assistance to build it. I figured I'd... When I talked to planning, they said, oh, yeah, just bring sketches in. We can work through it. I was in a hurry, because my father-in-law was leaving. Believe me, I wish I'd never done that. I've spent almost $10,000 between replotting my land, getting it resurveyed, erasing line between them, the inspections. Yeah, and this even costs $700 just to ask you guys for a variance. So, I've spent a lot of money. I wish I just hadn't done it. I would have left the tent there that I had, had I known what it was going to be like. I would be happy to work with them. I would probably... I don't believe that the slope... The floor slopes towards the garage... Towards the garage doors. I could certainly jacket and probably... That would probably be the easiest thing to do, would be to jacket and have that slope towards the garage. I have no intention... We have a cabin in Willow. I have no intention of keeping my four-wheelers or snow machines here anymore there.
But maybe you should.
Well, if I can... If I... I don't have to. If I call it a garage, if that gets me away from this, it does. But from a practicality standpoint...
I'm just saying that it's really hard to give people permits who are professionals in the industry that didn't get a... Or I'm sorry, a variance, if you didn't get a... So, I'm thinking, if there's a way you can fix this without needing a variance for that garage, then, you know, you could keep it.
Yeah, that was their recommendation, was that I get a variance. I'd be more than hap... I want to do what... I've been working on this for a year and a half. I wish I'd never built it. It's cost me, like I said, almost $10,000, and I'm still exactly where I was a year and a half ago. I'd be more than happy if you guys aren't willing to grant me a variance. That's probably the way I'll go, or I'll demolish it, which is a shame. There's nothing wrong with it. Those are my two options. Moving it is just not. It's just too costly and too... It's the unknown cost. I don't know what it would cost me to have it moved because of the utilities.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Mott? Are there any questions of the applicant by staff?
No, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
You certainly can. Mr. Hale would like to ask staff a question.
Thank you through the chair. I just want to ask about the process for designating this as a garage. I mean, it seems like it's got all the components. You've got conflicting information. What do you think the possibility... I mean, can... Is this a recourse?
Through the chair, Mr. Hale. I do... I don't know what cost that would bear on Mr. Mott to do that and what other things he might have to do, but there is a possibility he could convert it or reclassify it and construct... Modify it to make it a garage. I do want to remind you, or just point it... Again, point out, this is a very interesting subdivision. It's an R5 lot just west of West Park, Sand Lake area, with onsite systems. So, today, a 40,000-square-foot lot is what's required for onsite systems. It's really interesting. The neighborhood to the west of this is R1, and they're all on onsite with actual Awu water, but they're all 40,000-square-foot R1 lots. And so, the 2040 Land Use Plan, again, designates this as a large lot residential area, even though it's zoned R5 and has been for quite a few years. And if he was an R6, an R8, an R9, even an R10 lot, you know, that... A large lot, what would be... You know, this shed would not even be a consideration, because 18 feet was the minimum in an R10, and it's 25 in the other three. And I realize he's not in that scenario, right? Right. So, he wouldn't even be here if he was in, you know, in one of those actual large lot residential what the 2040 Land Use Plan classifies. This is just a holdover 70s plat with really small onsite lots.
Which we've dealt with before.
We have. And that's kind of where the special circumstances I kind of lean towards is this is a very small onsite lot that shouldn't exist. I mean, they were platted in the 70s, and they've just... We're dealing with them now. Like you said, we're having to deal with these issues a little bit. And again, had he been in a large lot residential, standard R6, you know, this wouldn't even be a consideration.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Smythe?
Follow-up that for board discussion through the chair with Mr. Hale. I think for this to get permitted as a garage, my experience with the municipality, he would have to hire an architect. They would have to verify a lot of the construction. It would, in my estimation, be quite a bit more than the amount of money he spent already to get here to even explore the concept of it being a garage and permitted that way. I think that would be my concern personally.
Okay, we're kind of in discussion, so hang on. Is there anyone from the public wishing to testify in this case?
Madam Chair, there's one phone testimony, if nobody else is in person. Beth, this is the Zoning Board of Examiners and Appeals calling for public testimony in case 2023-0105. Are you testifying as an individual or representing a group?
As an individual.
All righty. You have three minutes for to testify. Please state your full name for the record, and you can begin.
Thank you. My name's Elizabeth Stewart. I'm a CPA and business leader here in Anchorage. I live on the same street as Mr. and Mrs. Mott. I drive past their house every day, twice a day at least, and I support their petition, their shed.
Do you have anything else to say? Ms. Stewart? I believe she hung up.
Hello?
Oh, there she is.
Oh, I'm sorry. I think my phone's connected to a different speaker.
Do you have anything additional?
I'm sorry, say that again?
You still have 2 minutes and 38 seconds. Do you have anything additional to say?
I don't know what part was what you were able to hear.
We heard that you drove by it twice a day, and you don't have any quarrel with it.
Yes, that's exactly right. I drive by it at least twice a day, and I think both of the sheds that are the subject of the petition are... They fit in well with the neighborhood. They don't cause any disturbance, or they're not in any way unsightly or blocking views or in any other way of concern to the neighborhood. So, I am supportive of the petition.
And that's it? Are you done?
That's it. Thank you for giving me the chance to participate.
Thank you, Ms. Stewart, for your testimony.
Thanks.
I guess I should have asked the applicant, but I didn't. Does the staff have any rebuttal?
No, Madam Chair.
Does the applicant have any rebuttal?
No, ma'am.
Okay.
The only thing I'd like to add, I mean, I'm committed to working through this. I just want to make this right. Made a mistake by starting without a permit. As going back to, you know, trying to reclassify it as a garage, every time I've tried to do something, I've thought I've kind of been at the end of the line. I've been hit with six more things. So, that may sound like an easy option, but I thought just vacating the lot line was going to get me... I was going to be done when I vacated the lot line, because I built it on a lot that I owned next to my house. I didn't know that I couldn't put that on an empty lot. So, by vacating lot line, I thought I was done. Well, that was $6,000 or $7,000 worth of work to get to that point, and then I'm still back to square one. And my concern is if I'm not granted this variance, I'll be trying to reclassify it as a garage, and there may be six more things that are going to cost extraordinary amounts of money that I have no idea of at this point, so...
Thank you. So, the public hearing is closed, and the matter rests with the board. May I have a positive motion, please? And we're going to take them individually. So, the first variance is for the height of the rear shed.
Thank you through the chair. Chair, I move in case 2023-0105 to approve a variance from AMC 21.06.020A, Table 21.06-1, Table of Dimensional Standards, residential districts to allow the rear shed to exceed the maximum allowable height of 12 feet by 3 feet, subject to the conditions shown on page six of the staff report.
Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Smythe. It is moved and seconded that a variance to grant to allow the rear shed to exceed the maximum allowable height of 12 feet by 3 feet, subject to the conditions shown on page six of the staff report. Mr. Hale, please speak to your motion.
Thank you. This is one of those cases where they... they planted it a long time ago, and then along came all the code. We've dealt with this before, and it's difficult because of onsite systems and the requirements now to be 40,000 square feet. So that alone means that you're dealing with a limited amount of space to fit everything. And in the past, I think the board has looked pretty leniently on that, and we've tried to accommodate structures and setback requirements to, to allow these, these old lots to exist and still be able to function like their neighbors. So I'll only address the conditions that appear to be not met. A is met, so we're good there. For B, and we're talking about variance 1, the size of the lot certainly impacts the, the placement of it, but it can also impact the, you know, the height, because the smaller the footprint, maybe the more space that you need to go a little bit higher. And if you couple that with the fact that your surrounding neighbors are also able to enjoy the use of the same structure without these limitations, it seems like a reasonable thing to say that that standard is met. And if you can't do what your neighbors are doing, that is an undue hardship. I'll speak to condition C. It appears that it's self-imposed, but really, this all started back in the 70s when these lots were, were platted really small and, and can't accommodate the structures that you need in Alaska, really, to, to exist and live happily. And again, with all of the neighboring lots able to enjoy the use of their sheds/ detached garage, whatever you want to call them, you know, it makes sense that, that it really wasn't the current actions, it was the plating actions back in the 70s that were the cause of it. So I think that that standard, it's not self-imposed, and the standard is met. And then we've got H, I believe. Met, met, met. This variance granted is a minimum variance, yeah. I mean, the reasonable use of the land is to use the land the way that your neighbors are using their land. And I believe that what we are granting here is the minimum variance that will allow you to use your land like everybody else around you does. So I believe that standard is met as well.
Mr. Smythe?
Thank you, through the chair. I also agree with Mr. Hale's findings on B, C, and H. And I'd like to only add that on item C, that I'd argue that the hardship would not be self-imposed. I do believe the applicant in taking the steps to try and measure from the road in, in, in good faith and add 10 more feet, and that's not the-
This is the height one.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Thank you for that clarification. What I meant to say was the hardship involved in trying to reduce the height of that shed, I believe, would be, would be extreme. So I intend to support the motion also. Thank you.
Is there any further discussion? Anyone else? Are you ready for the question? The question is on the adoption of a motion to grant a variance to allow the rear shed to exceed the maximum allowable height of 12 feet by 3 feet, subject to the conditions shown on page 6. A yes vote will grant the variance, and a no vote will deny the variance. Please vote.
Mr. Ramadal, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mr. Ramadal?
Yes.
Thank you.
There are six votes in the affirmative, no votes in the negative, so the variance is granted. Moving on to variance 2. Variance 2 is the front shed and the fact that it extends into the front setback. May I have a positive motion, please? Mr. Smythe?
Yeah, I move in case 2023-0105 to approve the variance from AMC 21.06.020A, Table 21.06-1, Table of Dimensional Standards, residential districts to allow the front shed to encroach 3 feet into the front setback.
It has been moved and seconded. Let's see, we did that, didn't we? No, we didn't. I've lost my place. Mr. Smythe? Would you speak to your variance?
Yeah, I've lost my place too. I wish we would have grouped these together anyways. Let's see, it was not meant for, for B and partially meant for C. Pardon me. For A, met, yeah, and I think the, for B, the physical circumstances, the strict application of it, like the applicant said, having to tear down that, tear down the existing retaining, or rebuild it for a de minimis setback requirement, does not make sense to me. And I think in this specific instance, you could call hardship, and I'm going to, I'm going to say it is met for C. Agree with staff findings on all other except H, where I think it is melt, met, being the minimum variance for him to use that shed that already exists. So I intend to support the motion.
Thank you. Mr. Flynn?
Yes, I agree with Mr. Smythe on both point C and H. It was stated by the applicant that he did in good faith measure from what he believed to be the center of the street, and, you know, seemed to rely on the fact that this, this, the road was built where, where it should have been. So I don't think that that's at fault for the, the applicant, and I, I also intend to support this. Thank you.
Is there any further discussion? Mr. Hale?
Thank you, through the chair. I'd just also mention, again, the small size of this lot and the fact that it's sloped is going to require extraordinary efforts to, to dig things out, create retaining walls, and make it very difficult to meet this code. So I just wanted to say that as well.
Anything further? Okay, are you ready for the question? The question is on the adoption of the motion to grant a variance to allow the front shed to encroach 3 feet into the front setback, subject to conditions on page 6 and 7 of the packet. A yes vote will grant the variance, and a no vote will deny the variance. Please vote.
Mr. Ramadal, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you.
So we have six votes in the affirmative and zero votes in the negative. The variance is granted. The variances are granted.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to the last case. Okay, this is case 2023-0134. The petitioner is the Alaska Wildlife Conservation Center. It was representative here.
Hi, my name is Marco Zaccaro. M-A-R-C-O.
Just wait, not quite. We're just glad you're here.
Oh, yeah.
All right. Will the staff please describe the notice given in this case?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So on November 16th, 2023, a total of 27 public hearing notices were in accordance with the procedures of AMC 2103-020H. No public comments were received, and no comments were received from the Portage Valley and the Federation of Community Councils.
Is there any objection to the sufficiency of notice in this case? Continue on. Will the staff please present the case loudly?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, I'll present the, the staff will present the case here. So the, the petitioner requests a variance from minimum stream setback width per side to allow the Matson Ocean Education Center Marine Wildlife Viewing Structure and Stream Inlet Overlook to be built within the stream setback. This variance request is necessary to provide a sheltered observation platform overlooking Turnigan Arm and associated marine wildlife. Let's see here. There's a section of code AMC 2107020B9DVII, and that basically states that within the streamside zone, the falling use is permitted. Structures used for fishing platforms, stream outlooks, and wildlife viewing. So during Watershed Management Services' review of the project, the agency made a decision that a variance should be attained as the structure and platform is substantially larger than a typical wildlife observation platform and walkways. But Watershed Management Services has submitted comments in support of the variance. And there were no other objections from any of the reviewing agencies. So for the standards, staff finds that condition A is met. The petition site is located at the confluence of Portage Creek, Placer River, and Turnigan Arm. This point of land offers a unique opportunity to view Turnigan Arm at the river estuaries, but it is affected by the stream setbacks surrounding the area. Staff finds condition B is met. As demonstrated in standard A, there are physical constraints of the subject property in the form of streams, which limits its full development potential within the low-lying area. Staff finds condition C is met. What is the applicant's choice to extend the development footprint into the riparian edge and streamside zones? They will be taking measures to lessen the development envelope disturbance within that title flats. Staff finds condition D is met. Given the character and history of the zoning, it doesn't appear that granting the variance to encroach the stream protection setback will affect the use of adjacent parcels. The proposed improvements do not extend beyond property lines, nor will they encumber adjoining property owners. Staff finds standard E is met. It will not change the character of the PLI zoning district. The comprehensive planned land use designation is commercial, and the use type is a community use. The property is, is being developed in a manner that's consistent with the purpose of the district. Staff finds condition F is met. The proposed encroachment is not going to impact any public rights, right-of-way utilities, or stormwater drainage, things like that. Standard G is met. The facility accessibility will not be impacted by this variance request. And standard H is met. The purpose of streamside setbacks is to mitigate the negative impacts to the ecological function of the stream habitat. However, the proposed wildlife observation structure has several mitigating factors to reduce the site impacts. These designs include the viewing platform from being placed on pilings with the structure elevated above the ground, decks and ramps constructed of metal grating for rain and sunlight to penetrate, and site impacts minimized by not installing underground water, sewer, and electrical. Therefore, staff finds that all eight standards have been met and recommends approval of the variance subject to conditions 1 and 2 found on page 6 of the staff packet. I'm happy to answer any questions, and as you can see, the petitioner, petitioner's representative is here tonight. And that's all.
Are there any questions of staff by the board? Mr. Smythe?
So quickly, this has confused me earlier. There's, because of what you said, there's no need for a variance other than Watershed Management has asked us to review it?
So I believe, I was asked the same question too, and I had to call Marco Zaccaro there. He'll, he'll probably give you the background of it. So as you can see, that section of code, while it does allow fishing platforms, stream overlooks, and wildlife viewing, and that this is a, the section of the code that Watershed Management Services looks at, I believe the intent, you know, the spirit of that was more maybe small wildlife platforms. This is going to be about 1,100 square feet. And they, and they kind of, I believe Marco will discuss kind of how, going back and forth in the discussions with Waterman, Watershed Management Services, they felt that it didn't quite meet the intent, and they've requested Alaska Wildlife Center to go through the variance process. There's no threshold, per se, in the code that says, you know, you can have a wildlife viewing platform, but if it exceeds X number of square feet or walk, amount of walkway, then therefore you have to get, you know, it's not allowed.
Mr. Hale?
That was my question. There's nothing in the code that gives size limitations?
No, nope.
Okay, so they're just trying to make sure that it has approval if somebody comes back and-
Correct. Correct.
Any other questions of staff by the board? One else? Okay. Are there any questions of staff by the applicant? Okay. Then will the applicant or the applicant's representative please come forward and state and spell your name for the record?
Hi, my name is Marco Zaccaro. And we'd like to thank the staff for their report, and we agree with their findings. And we won't go over all eight standards, but I'd like to elaborate on the first three standards a little bit. The Alaska Wildlife Conservation Center is a wildlife rescue and rehabilitation center with a, with a public education component and mission. And it is located in Portage, Alaska, in, at the confluence of the Placer and, and Portage Creek. And at that confluence, there's quite a surprising amount of marine wildlife. And so to further their public education component, they would like to locate a wildlife viewing platform at that confluence so that visitors can see the, the marine wildlife at the head of Turnigan Arm. And then, and because the weather is incredibly inclement in that area, in addition to the large wraparound deck, there's a heated space with bathrooms. The facility is pretty far away from their other facilities. And in order to teach classes and do whale watching, we thought that they should have a tempered space to, to be within because, again, the weather in Portage is, is very inclement. As, as was noted, wildlife viewing platforms are allowed in streamside setbacks. Watershed Management was uncomfortable with administratively approving this particular platform. There's, there's nothing in code that defines how big or small the platform should be, but they, they did not want to take it on their own responsibility to approve it. So they requested we get a variance. The third standard, the reason why we want to put it in the riparian edge zone is that the stream banks are relatively tall there. So we're outside of the actual streamside setback, which is 25 feet. But we're within the riparian edge zone, which is the 75 feet between the stream setback and then the edge of the riparian edge zone. And we're, we straddle that line with the building. Any further away because of the, the height of the banks, we, you can, can't really see the surface of Turnigan Arm very well or any wildlife in Turnigan Arm, just due to the view angles, unless you're there right at high tide, if that makes sense. So we, we did our due diligence, walked the site, and determined this would be the best place to view the, the marine wildlife. And, and we set it as far back as, as we could practically, while also being able to see the, the surface of the, the water. And that's all the enlargement I have on the first three standards, which are the critical standards in this case. And Representative AWCC would like to make a few words, too.
Thank you for having me. My name is Sarah Howard. S-A-R-A-H-H-O-W-A-R-D. I'm the executive director with the Wildlife Center. The AWCC is a nonprofit sanctuary dedicated to preserving native Alaska wildlife through conservation, education, research, and quality animal care. And education is a huge component of this building. It's a huge component of the mission of the Wildlife Center. We see 250,000 guests a year. And between all of our direct and indirect programming that we offer for our educational students and, and everybody that visits, we, we encounter 50,000 students and, and visitors just through our education department and our programming that we offer. that we offer. The Matson Ocean Education Building will be a building that allows full classrooms to come out to the point. That is the area on page 22 of the packet. That is the point of the Wildlife Center, that's what we call it. Um, and you can see that there's a gazebo and a boardwalk already out there, and we have a whole classroom, excuse me, of kiddos that come out there. Um, it's a mile and a half loop, and it's really far away from a lot of our other facilities that we offer, and especially this time of year. This morning, we woke up with 3 feet of snow. Having a building out there for those kiddos to shelter and get into, and then we can host a, a really interactive and unique program in that space, so the kids can just see it live happening right in front of them, as well as being sheltered and have facilities if they need it, um, this building will kinda elevate that experience for our visitors and our guests.
Thank you. Um, are there any questions of the applicant slash applicants by the board members? Seeing none, are there any questions of the applicant by staff?
Uh, no questions.
Thank you. Is there anyone from the public wishing to speak?
What's that? No, you're, you're trying to talk. I don't have, all I wanted to say was that I was in favor of it.
Just wait, wait, wait.
Of the, uh, program, but I was...
State your name.
Okay.
And spell it.
My name is Henry Dominguez. Uh, I live in Portage, and, uh, was totally snowed in, but I got out. And, uh, I just wanted to say that I was in favor of the program, but I wanted to advise, uh, everybody about, uh, the tides and, and, and making any decisions with the tides, because not just in the summertime, but in the wintertime, uh, they can, they can tear up everything, and, uh, and then you get in a position where you have to have a lot of riprap and stuff like that, and then that creates a separate problem, as Homer found out. Uh, when they started to put riprap at the base of the spit, and all of a sudden, they lost the whole side of the spit, and now actually, the tide's moved around and is cutting in on the other side. So, and, not that I have any answers for that, but I was just saying, uh, you have to be cautious, and when I saw this, uh, printout that I received in the mail, yeah, I had a lot of people ask me, "Well, what is this?" and stuff, because nobody could understand it, so a little more public information or a, a clearer picture of what it would be, uh, would be helpful, and to have somebody other than me come in, 'cause I can't hear very well. But I've been here, and I've, uh, well, my background is marine science, uh, onboard vessels, through the ice, up north, all the way out into the Aleutians, at Amchitka Island, where they set off the hydrogen bomb with the University of Alaska, DNR, ADFG, all, everybody. And I had five research boats, large ones that were over 100 feet, and so I know a little bit about environmental impact statements, 'cause we did a lot of those, and we did a lot of that type of thing, and it's, uh, anytime you're talking about being, doing anything that's, has any tides even slightly associated to it, you have to be very careful. That's all I'm saying. So anything that's built where the ice might get it is, uh, and, uh, I just wanted to say that I supported that, but be careful. And, uh, I have some, uh, pictures here that you're all welcome to, that show the, uh, can I bring, come forward and bring these up? Yeah, I usually do a lot of talking that way, I am, but some of these, uh, my hearing's not very good. And, um, I can disturb your... They kinda shows the floor. Yeah, and, uh, that's the case. You showed us what's there, and, uh, I did a lot of hydrology. Uh, well, uh, for the pipeline, I did the hydrology for the pipeline, I did it for, uh, Susitna, and, uh, for Bradley Lake, and, uh, and then, of course, the science work, we did side scan sonar and, and Dopplers and, uh, numerous things, but the thing that's always the trickiest is to do anything anywhere near the tides. It's not like doing it in downtown Anchorage. It's a whole different game, and right now, I think the city, with their harbor, I think they're finding out, uh, I guess there's some problems with what they built down there, so. So I was in support.
Your time is up.
And that's it. That's all I have to say.
Are there any questions of Mr. Dominguez?
And thanks, next time I'll bring somebody that can help me here.
Is there anybody else wishing to testify in the case? Anybody else from the public? Okay. Does the staff have any rebuttal?
Uh, no.
Does the applicant have any rebuttal? You have...
Yes, thank you.
An undetermined amount of time.
We do appreciate the, uh, comments, and, uh, and the, uh, building is about 40 feet back from the top of the streambank, and according to AWCC staff, they've not observed any ice, um, from high tides on, above the streambank edge, so we're not, um, concerned about actual ice pack around the building. Um, the building is on pilings, and the bottom of the steel is about 4 feet off the ground. We've worked with, uh, Watershed Management, Steve Ellis, who, and have talked quite a bit about, uh, flood hazard and what we're doing with flood hazard, and he has no objection to the project, and we've used, uh, uh, his input to establish base flood elevation, which the first floor of the building is 1 foot above, and then everything below that is completely water-resistant, and if there was an exceptionally high tide, it could go under the building, and because it's on pilings and there's no sensitive, uh, uh, infrastructure below the building, it won't affect it.
That's it? Okay, um, the public hearing is now closed, and the matter rests with the board. May I have a positive motion, please?
I move in case, uh, 2023-0134 to approve a variance from AMC 21.07.020, Table 21.07-1, minimum stream setback width per side to allow wildlife viewing platform with structure and associated connecting ramps to encroach within the riparian edge zone of Placer River slash Portage Creek, subject to the conditions shown on page 6 of the staff report.
Mr. Hale seconds. It has been moved and seconded to, um, allow the wildlife viewing platform with structure and associated connecting ramps to encroach within the riparian zone edge of Placer River and Portage Creek, subject to condition, to the conditions shown on page 6 of the staff report. Mr. Flynn, will you speak to the motion, please?
Uh, yes, through the chair. Uh, I, uh, do agree with the staff's recommendations and, uh, do intend to have a positive vote on this. Thank you.
Mr. Hale.
Uh, I have no further comments, I agree as well.
Any further discussion? Are you ready for the question? I assume you are. The question is on the adoption of a motion to grant a variance to allow the wildlife viewing platform with structure and associated connecting ramps to encroach within the riparian edge zone of Placer River and Portage Creek, subject to the conditions shown on page 6. A yes vote will grant the variance and a no vote will deny the variance. Please vote.
Mr. Ramadal, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you.
There are six votes in the affirmative, zero votes in the negative. The variance is granted. There you go. So, um, no reports from the chair. Reports from the secretary? No committees? Board member comments? Oh, sorry. And now, we have, um, on the agenda, election of a parliamentarian, because Mr. Quinn, um, decided to go to the dark side, oh, I mean, uh, the plating board. So, um, we can either elect one now, or we can wait till elections in March, and I would have a positive vote, I mean, positive motion on any of that. Please.
Is there someone that wants to do it?
Flynn? What is a parliamentarian? Has to know the rules of parliamentary rules and procedures. I guess we'll wait till March, but we need a motion. Somebody say it.
I'll make a motion to postpone the elections in March.
Second?
Second.
Any objection? Seeing none, the election of a parliamentarian has been postponed to the March meeting, should we have one. And now, now we're done. Okay, uh, positive motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
We're adjourned. Did you catch all that?